I'd like to call the order, meeting to order and we'll start if you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2015. And if I'm not mistaken, Laura, I think it's you I asked to call the roll.
That would be correct. Lewis?
Here.
Landwear?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer, here. And Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Okay, thanks. I just want to mention or just remind, there's a little bit of a delay when we're talking and I already talked over Laura and I apologize for that, but I will try to remember to pause when you're talking. I'd like to read our mission statement, which is Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And next up would be the agenda approval adjustments and announcements. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Is that Molly?
Yes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Grant? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Announcements, September 8th, Tuesday is the first day of school. September 8th, Tuesday at 8:00 a.m., a school board special election filing opens. September 8th, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., we have a regular school board meeting. September 15th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., will be a school board listening session and that will be in the family center. And then September 15th, Tuesday at 5:30 will have a school board work session. September 22nd, Tuesday at 4:30, the school board special election filings close. And September 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., we would have a regular school board meeting. Next is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be communication to the board. Citizens and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? You guys will have to help me out with this one, I can't see.
Nobody's here.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Second by Grant. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up would be the acknowledgement of contributions. And if I could get a motion to move that forward so we can read the resolution?
So moved.
Ted, thank you. Second?
Second.
Grant, thank you. All right. Bear with me. Acknowledgement of contribution resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $2,500. The detailed background and monetary. A donation of $320 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Matching Gifts for Student Needs. A donation of $550 was made to Valley View Elementary by Target for Student Needs. A donation of $60 was made to Valley View Elementary by Lisa Murrah for Student Needs. A donation of $320 was made to Valley View Elementary by Kyle Patarica for Student Needs. A donation of $50 was made to Columbia Academy by Target Corporation Thanks a Billion Program for Student Needs. A donation of $75 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Target Corporation Take Change of Education Program for Student Needs. A donation of $325 was made to North Park Elementary by Target Corporation Thanks a Billion Program for Student Needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights School Scholarship Program, PEO Chapter EZ $150 and FM Global Employees $910. Total fiscal year 2015-2016 monetary contributions to date, $2,500. Any discussion regarding that resolution?
Comment?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
I just want to put it out there and I'm sure that I can speak for the board on that. It's just how grateful we are for the contributions that are made for our students' needs and just how much we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other discussion or comments. Laura, if you would, roll call. Read the roll call.
Lewis?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next would be discussion reports, information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly, would you like to start tonight, please?
Sure. I had an opportunity to meet with Kathy, Superintendent Kelly, sorry, last week and then attended the work session. Also had an opportunity to go down to Edison and watch our varsity football team have a pretty big win to open their season. And then was fortunate enough to be able to come to the new employee orientation and meet some of our newest teachers here and other members of the district yesterday morning. And that's it for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted?
I also had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly prior to this, thank you, and met with the WMAP administration. Dr. Kimberly Matier was hired to be Executive Director of WMAP. I'm going to meet further with her tomorrow just to get some ideas and help her, help get to know each other so that we can, hopefully she can serve Columbia Heights students through WMAP. And then was also able to take the bus tour yesterday with Member Nichols and Member, to be at the new teacher orientation with Member Nichols and Member Lewis and then after that to take a bus tour around Columbia Heights with the new staff. Just so much enthusiasm. It's always great to see that and to know, learn where they're coming from and just to have that, tell them about the district and have that communication with them. So should be a great year. I'm looking forward to it. Also want to give a great thank you to all the directors and the city staff that helped make that a great event yesterday. Mayor Peterson, Liz Bray, Keith Winchell, police and fire, just everybody came out and really welcomed the teachers. So really made you feel proud to be part of the Columbia Heights community. And also had a meeting with constituents this last week. That's all.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, obviously I attended the work session and also I had a meeting with constituents also last week. That's pretty much it for me.
Okay, thank you. Grant?
I attended the football game against Edison with, you know, saw Molly there and just want to say we won 40 to nothing, so I think that's pretty important to say, so kind of shove it to the Tommies, but it was a really good game and I was happy for both, both teams played well and it was very good sportsmanship. Attended the, like, Member Landwear and then Member Lewis to the new teachers meetings yesterday and it was fun. A lot of enthusiasm by these young teachers that we're getting and meeting them all was really awesome. It was funny because I was calling them Highlander and then their first name and then they kind of caught on. It's kind of like adopting new people into the Highlander family, so it was cool. And like to thank the police and the fire department and the mayor and the city and it was really, and Tasty's Pizza too. Can't forget about the food, so yeah, it's one thing you'll never forget with Tasty's, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing to report. Next up would be the superintendent's report.
Well, Mr. Chair and members, the administrative E12 retreat occurred in this month and we focused on leadership change and management around the district's board-approved strategic roadmap. This was the training that was provided for us by IBM. They actually flew in two presenters from opposite ends of the United States to spend the day with us. And each group focused on a different member, each group focused on a different part of the strategic roadmap and developed some goals and implementation plans. So that was a very, very good and productive day for us. And we talked a lot about some things as far as our communication plans and things that we'd be doing throughout the year for customer service, but we did have a focus this year, and there was a special focus, it was on American Indian education. And we really focused for a good part of one day. And that included the examination of the curriculum and instructional practices that have been going on all this summer. We met with the Minnesota Humanities Commission to see what kind of resources they had. And then we actually took an onsite field trip to the Mounds, Park Burial Mounds and the sacred caves alongside the river and we had a native with us who spoke the language and talked to us about customs and more importantly lived the path that we were on. It was a very moving day for our team. And we gained a lot, I think, in the area of support, not only resources but cultural awareness. It was very growthful. And the reviews came back very good from the administrative team, so that's always a good thing. Director Holbein and I spent some time with School District Attorney Joel Engel. Some of you have met him. He worked on our Highlander Center with us and he works on all of our projects with facilities. And we were talking about the legal implications and the liability issues that come regarding the future development of the former Castle Heights site. And as promised, because you requested some of that information, we've invited him out to the next school board work study so that he can talk to you directly about that and you can have your questions answered about that. We, I had a delightful time with Member Molly Lewis for coffee and conversation, so thank you for making time for that with me. And then I also met with the new Executive Director of WMAP and with former Superintendent Keith Lester because he's mentoring her. And they were out for district feedback on what we thought we needed. And in addition, they are talking about a new governance structure over at WMAP and I'm sure Ted knows much more about this than I do, but they've invited all the superintendents to be part of their next board meeting to talk about what the board governance structure should look like over there. And then beginning in September, I will be their official superintendent rep on the Joint Powers Board. So Ted and I will be talking a lot of WMAP together. We continue to meet with Local 710 for contract negotiations. I too attended the school board work study. And then I met with Principal Burkett, who's hard at work at Columbia Academy, and he presented the first 100 days of what's going to be going on at the academy as far as implementation plans. I want to thank everybody that participated in scaling the heights. It's always a favorite time of the year and it's still going on for our new teachers, but it was really special that school board members came out and met and were part of the scavenger hunt, actually, and spent time building relationships with our staff. Feedback is that Vice Chair Landwear did a really great job on the bus tour and shaded a lot of the history into the tour, so we appreciate that. And then thanks for eating with the teachers at Long Jee. It was really nice that you came back. Tasty's Pizza was delicious pizza, the spaghetti and the chocolate cake was really, really good. And then, and a special thanks, I just want to echo what everyone has said about our community members who not only this year but every year show up and really talk about what our community is like and more importantly model it for them. So thank you for that. And then I did have a conference call on Sunday with Chair Larkin. And so it was all business. He didn't talk much about what he was doing and we talked about the agenda and then I did meet with Vice Chair Landwear and we went over the agenda before the meeting. And I've had multiple conversations with all of you about something, so thank you. And thank you for your time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up would be an information item, the customer service plan. And the board will be presented with information on the customer service plan. It looks like Lindsey and, is that going to be coming to the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Holbein and I are here tonight just to discuss a little bit of our plan for the customer service training. About a year ago, Nicole and I took a training through the U of M Extension Office on its At Your Service, At Your Service Working with Multicultural Customers. So we are both certified and able to do the training. Last year, we brought out the representative that did our training to train principals, directors, and some select APs. And so the next people on our list are to train the clerical, which we have a date set up for November. And it's a non-student contact day, which is good, so we're not taking them all to buildings while there's students there. Some of the goals of this training are to understand the foundations of customer service, increase awareness of culture and how it affects customer service, both as a service provider and for the customers. And it also helps people gain enthusiasm, confidence, and commitment to provide superior service to all customers, and this also includes the internal customers. The training does focus a lot around how people will make a judgment of the district long before they even enter the doors and how everybody plays a role. And Director Holbein will probably agree with this too, it's just a very good way of kind of putting perspective that you may be on top of your game, but if somebody before you maybe isn't the kindest, they remember that and they might take it out on you and how you need to step up and what your role is in this process. So we'll start training the clerical and then slowly roll it out from there to the rest of the members.
Also, a very valuable piece that we took from the training and brought back to Superintendent Kelly and the rest of management is that the vast majority of people, their most common contact with the school district is through the phone, whether it's their first contact or multiple contacts as they are calling regarding their student or questions for employment, et cetera. So we're really going to be working on this month and next month on rolling out how to answer the phone to all people. We have a script that gives them an idea of how to introduce themselves, Columbia Heights Public Schools, you know, "Good morning, good afternoon," whatever, you know, Nicole Holbein, Columbia Heights Public Schools, Director of Student Services, "How can I help you?" So just, you know, simple, pleasant, direct, give them the information. You've reached Columbia Heights Public Schools and who you're talking to and then, "How can I help you?" So I think, you know, we're really excited about the training. It was excellent training that Lindsey and I attended. We were the only school people. There were a lot of business people, some people that worked for the state, and she was very impressed that a school district was really interested in seeing our community, our families, and our students as customers, as well as the internal customers that we have too with our staff, so we're excited about it.
Any questions?
I, can I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
I think this is really wonderful. It is amazing when you have the phone contact, you know, working customer service, you know, all day long, and just how incredibly important it is to approach from the, "I'm here to help you," you know, and being able to have that in all the building. It gives, it makes us welcome, welcoming and it just makes things so much smoother. And I think you've done a really wonderful job on getting the training and everything. I didn't even know there was something like that out there. So I can tell you that I've dealt with a lot of government agencies over the years and they could use it too. So I'm really, really happy to see this and I don't know if anybody else had, I mean, I think we talk about customer service a lot and how incredibly important it is. And culturally, that's another thing as well that, this is fabulous. I'm just stumbling over myself, so anyway. Anybody else?
I just had one question. About how long will it take for this to roll out to everyone in the district? Well, we're going to, we're trying to do it on non-student contact days and so we're slowly taking it piece by piece and we thought the clerical usually is the first, I guess, person, somebody either is greeted to or on the phone. So that was our most important group to get to this year. From there, we will probably roll it out. It's hard to get the teachers and especially with their staff development days right now, so maybe custodial because they play a part in it too, especially with the parents of the buildings and the grounds. So probably custodial and the cooks will be our next targeted group. But it's about a four-hour training, so we're going to try to pare it down a little bit so that we can get people there in full attention the whole time. I agree with Member Palmer. I think this is great and I think there's, in a training like that, there's something that everybody can walk away with that's beneficial in some way, shape, or form. So thank you for your time doing this. Yep.
Okay, I would just add that when I talk to constituents, this is a topic that comes off a lot and, you know, that really makes a difference how they're treated and how well the district responds to them. And I can tell you that from what I've heard, other districts do it very well. So we need to do it well also because we are being compared to other districts in that regard and so. And then I would also say, I know this topic has come up in the past, you know, we've talked about Disney customer service and had, you know, from time to time, that's been a topic that we've looked at, but the thing that seems to not happen is the implementation. So I'm glad to hear that you're actually starting to roll it out, have a plan, and I hope that it continues to be implemented and made a priority in the district because it's very important.
Last but least, I guess, so. Yeah, I think, you know, customer service has a lot to do with being efficient at your job, you know, at least in my career, that's kind of like the way it's been. I guess it's really good that, you know, training's going on. I mean, it's a good step and stuff. I mean, for me, I think the real impact will be hearing it, you know, from people outside here or seeing it, you know. So, you know, one thing to talk about, another thing to hear and see the actions done about it. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing that happen, so, you know, it's a good step to go forward. So I like the timeline that Molly asked about, so, you know, seeing what happens. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lindsey, Nicole, thank you. Maybe echoing, maybe not, but that first impression is a lasting impression and I'm sure that you guys will put forward a program that's going to work out really well and make that good first impression. So thank you for taking the time to go to that training.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move forward to the employee handbook. And board will be presented with information on the employee handbook. And Lindsey, you're still there, I bet?
Yes, I'm still here. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Each year, Human Resources does update the employee handbook and it was in your packet. There was very minimal changes this year. We had some contact information for union stewards that changed, clarification on vacation, allotments and payouts. I'm trying to think of the other big ones. Update to the policies, many policies have changed in the last year. Our goal this year is not to make copies and get them out to everybody, but to put it online and have everybody go online, look at it, and then sign the form that they did review the handbook, saving some money that way too and not having all the extra copies. The school district attorney has reviewed it. She says it looks good, so we're all set. So it's just more today for an information item. I can answer any questions and then it'll be brought forward at a future meeting for an action item.
Anybody have any questions?
Just so this complies with all the statutes and all that, as far as you know?
Yes, and that's one of our checklist. Every year, we have one for the employee handbook and we always make sure we review the policies and if it says it has to be in the handbook, because they'll say language in there that has to be in the staff handbook, we make sure those are in there. Any changes to statutes, we make sure that's reflected in there too.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Okay, Lindsey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up will be the placement center update and Nicole will be your presenter on that.
Thank you for the good customer service. Director Bennett for setting up my slideshow. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thank you. I always get really excited and I just blink and can hardly believe that I'm here again. In fact, I said to Superintendent Kelly, "No, that was just a few months ago." And I looked it up in my notes. Oh, it was a year ago that I came before the board to talk about the end-of-the-year placement center report. So this is the data from last year of the placement center and our enrollment. And then I'll give you a little sneak preview of what's going on since the placement center opened the first week in August. So, the placement center enrollment totals since August 15th, 2004, which is when we opened the placement center to serve our families. So it was 1,070 in 2004 and you can see it's like a pretty little wave there. And last year it was 1,401 with a grand total of 15,323 students that have rolled through our doors. Here's the monthly average enrollment and you can see every year, you know, it might be more kids than not, but you can see that it peaks in August and September and then obviously would be the lowest in May. And this is traffic by grade. So out of the 1,401 that went through the placement center last year, Highland had 296, North Park 261, Valley View 279, Columbia Academy 242, and the high school 323. As far as race, we had 42% black, 19% white, 4% Asian, 2% American Indian, and 33% Hispanic came through last year. And this is 29 American Indian students, 262 whites, 587 African-American and black, 53 Asian, and 470 Hispanic. And you can see it by grade, which I find interesting. So here's by language. And these are all the languages that came through the placement center last year. It's just amazing. English, 757. Second would be Spanish speakers, 413, Somali 117, and Arabic 36. And then you can see all the variety of other languages. Little United Nations, or as Superintendent Kelly says, Little Manhattan. Of the students that enrolled last year, EL students by number, and I also have a percentage, must be on the next, there it is, oh, 512 enrolled. And so it's 37% of our students that enrolled last year, English was their second or third or fourth language. Pretty impressive. Open enrollment through choice is yours, 116 at the elementaries, 67 at the middle school, and 122 at the high school. So 305 students. Special education students register during 1415, 124 at the elementaries, 46 at the middle school, 67 at the high school, so 237 students on an IEP enrolled through the placement center last year. Total number of students enrolled for 1516, drum roll, 3,113. Now I want to remind you, and you can see the breakdown by the building, but I want to remind you that this is who are on the books right now. to remind you that this is who are on the books right now. So who have come through the placement center or who are, you know, were still continuing attending, but none of the drops have been done. So if people move, um, they have not done the drops. And those will come, um, well, October 1 is the date everybody likes to look at. So that just, you, those of you, you see the enrollment. That was the last time we did enrollment report and we will start again next week providing those, um, the superintendent will provide those to you in your packet. And that's it. And I can tell you a little bit about what's going on. Uh, we opened the doors August 4th. We have had, as been reported to me by the staff that works in there, um, we have, uh, the nurse just came in, so she's back, Joanne Larson, to review all the immunizations. Uh, we have the EL coordinator and the educational support coordinator go through all the EL and the testing and get the special ed, all the IPs in due process to make sure they're placed appropriately, as well as, um, Victoria Campaverde and a little extra help from our extraordinary, um, retired clerical, Bonnie Hughes. Um, so they're, they're busy, very steady is what they're telling me. Stedier than usual, um, but we're gonna expect a rush next week and the week after. So, you know, it's, it's a week longer than normally that we're open before school starts. So, but we're, we're bringing them in and families are given excellent customer service, I can attest to, in the placement center. I have never had one complaint. So as far as new families coming in saying they weren't helped and, um, all their needs that we can help them with are met. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I actually do have one question. Now, when we're doing the, the new enrollments and stuff, I know occasionally, um, the records don't come with the child.
Yeah.
Do we have, um, are, how are we doing with, um, doing the testing to make sure they're properly placed? Is that being done right away or, or how is that handled?
Yes, uh, if the records don't come in complete, um, in Minneapolis schools, because they opened early this year, um, families who moved here from Minneapolis, um, we are able to get really complete records. In past years, when we start with some of the bigger schools, right around the same time, sometimes the records are delayed a week or two because their clerical staff isn't in yet. But we've actually had very good luck, um, getting pretty complete records. And those who aren't, yes, we've already have some teachers coming in and are doing testing.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if we could get like a copy of that?
Of course.
Give it to the superintendent. I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
So are we able to know, know pretty quickly where they're at so that they're not wasting time when they start as far as where they're placed?
Yes, um, students who are in Minnesota, you know, and move to Columbia Heights is, it's much easier because we are all using the same instruments. Students who move into Columbia Heights from out of state, then we usually have them tested because it's, otherwise you're comparing apples to oranges. And we'd like to have the same information that we know how to use in our schools from Minnesota students.
Okay. I do want to give a shout out to understand there's early childhood screening that's also going on.
Yes, yeah.
Loan tiers from the Kiwanis, uh...
Yeah, they're very busy. Um, they're doing a lot of screening this week, um, as well as doing testing for early childhood special ed. So it's becoming a very busy place, although I, I, I can attest to that we're pretty much busy year round here, but it's fun to see the more kids come through the doors and get them ready to be Highlanders.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward, we're on our action items. Long-term facilities maintenance revenue. Uh, the board will be asked to approve the budget for the long-term facilities maintenance revenue and, uh, Bill will be presenting. Hi, Bill.
Yes, good evening. Chair Larkin, um, Director of the School Board and Superintendent Kelly. Last meeting, I presented a worksheet to you, a budget, um, for our long-term maintenance facility dollars, the, and the, an idea of how we expect to spend these dollars over the next, next 10 years. It's actually 11 years here because, uh, you'll see the 16 is not on there yet because this funding doesn't start until 17. Anyway, we're, we're actually pretty excited about this. This is something that we've been waiting for, for a long time, um, from MDE, where they're actually earmarking dollars for our deferred maintenance. And especially with the age of our buildings, we have a lot of deferred maintenance to take care of. So you can see there that the health and safety program is kind of rolled into our, um, deferred maintenance program the way we have it now. So the funding all comes together into one. Um, going forward, what we did, we worked on what our expectations would be for our health and safety. You can see that on the top portion of the spreadsheet. And then in the bottom, uh, we have some ideas pulling out of our 10-year, um, facility plan, how we expect to spend the dollars to get those projects all up to date. So, um, in order to receive these, this new funding, uh, we've got to send a budget to MDE and that's what this is. So it's our best guess at this time of what, uh, kind of where those dollars will be placed in different areas. So, um, just looking for some action tonight from the school board.
Why don't we, if we could, maybe get a motion in a second and then we'll open up for discussion. Can I get a motion to move this forward, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, questions or comments?
So if I understand right, this money is coming from the state, not from property tax?
It's, it's going to be a combination, um, just like it is now. Our, um, our deferred revenue dollars we get right now, part of it's maintenance, part of it is levy, part of it is, uh, dollars from the state of Minnesota. So when going forward, um, these dollars, um, that, that percentage between this two, I, I expect it to be about the same until we get into this a little farther and get a better idea of exactly how those formulas are gonna shake out. Um, you're not gonna see a huge increase or anything to our, our, uh, levy because the majority of this is gonna come from state aid. Um, so that's what we're really excited about and we're gonna get some funding without having to, uh, push everything off, off onto our, our taxpayers, which lots of these programs tend to be that way in the past. Uh, but just to get an idea, the health and safety piece though, that is going forward on the top, I mean, that is pretty much all levy at this time. So going forward, it just remains the same.
Well, it's pretty much the same level as we've been at for...
Yes. Yeah. But we'll see, in, in total, we're gonna see a little more dollars available for deferred revenue. When we get out, um, to 19 and 2, and 2020, we're gonna have some more dollars totally to take care of our buildings.
But are those new dollars coming mostly from state then?
Yes. It's about, it's about a third, two-thirds, uh, split.
Okay. And is this required then to submit this in order to get those state dollars?
Yeah, in, in order to receive the state dollars, we've got to give them an idea of how we expect to spend the dollars. So that's what this is for. This will be updated on a yearly basis. And then of course, we'll talk more detail each year on, you know, the first year that's here, exactly what projects we'll be doing. But we will contest every year and give them an updated budget.
Thank you.
Um, I, I actually do have a question here. I mean, I see that, um, down here that we've got the roofs, um, listed for the first couple of years in here through 20, what is it, through 2020? And then later on, I see plumbing. Um, is that, um, a guesstimate that we're gonna be looking at replacing, uh, the systems in each one of the sites?
Yeah, if you remember back when we did our, um, all the work we did on our capital levy, um, which we were really worked with our 10-year facility, um, um, plan. And the, the levy that we were able to get passed, of course, doesn't cover all of our costs. So that's why we're really excited about this. We have a lot of plumbing that we've got to replace and we've got a lot of roofs that, you know, today they're fine, but in a few years, we're gonna have to start replacing them, just because of the age of them.
So will you be looking at, at, uh, updating the plumbing system out in 2022 or is that gonna come up sooner than that? Because I know we had some concerns at a couple of the buildings.
Remember that, that we still have the capital, the capital levy.
Oh, this is, okay, this is above and...
Yeah, this is above and beyond.
Okay, okay. All right. I was just like a little concerned, like I know that there's not much water pressure, at least over in Highlands, so...
Yes, this, this is gonna fill that gap of funding that we, we didn't quite have enough and now we will. And I say, Tom and I are very excited about this new funding source.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments?
I guess I just want to comment that it looks like over 10 years, it's a total of roughly around $15 million, um, for maintenance. So just so the community knows that that's what we're looking at.
Anyone else? Okay, here is no further discussion. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Next up on the agenda is board topics. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up under board topics?
Looking forward to the Chamber of Commerce breakfast tomorrow morning with the teachers and the rest of the, the week, uh, and then the convocation is next week. So things are up and running.
It's nice to see the, um, I guess we can't say horseshoe anymore. More, uh, roundabout out there. So it's, uh, you know, we can all use it, so I'm pretty happy about that. No more walking.
Walking's good.
Well, there's lots of roundabouts down here, so I'll be really good at driving up to the school when I get home.
And it looks like the playground's coming nicely, uh, over behind Highlands, so...
Nice looking blue and gold.
That's it.
Anything else? All right, if not, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:42 your time.